This is the regular meeting agenda of the government body of the borough. Bloomingdale Tuesday, September 16, 2025, and seven via closed meeting. Do we have a special question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Roll call please.
Mayor DeLato?
Here.
Councilman Brockhurst?
Present.
Councilman Catalano?
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson?
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert?
Here.
Councilwoman Yasi?
Here.
And Councilman Garagrasino is excused, he's away on business. This meeting is called to pursue the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Addictry notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 9, 2025. Copies were provided to the local news media posted continuously in a municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and unfiled in the office of the municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I'm required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance which you've entered through and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit, exit through the doors down the stairs and out the building. If any questions, please raise your hand. See you in a minute. I need a motion to authorize the administrative assistant Amy Greenspan to temporarily serve as municipal clerk for this council chambers. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, I skip, we do have our administrative assistants Amy Greenspan with us, business administrator Michael Sondemire, and borough attorney Don Sullivan. We do not have any non-agenda items. We do have an executive session tonight for...
Negotiations.
Negotiations, but there'll be no action taken afterwards, so you know what we can. Alright, do we have a motion up early public comment?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to come up and talk about anything on the agenda?
For the approved corrective action plan, there were grants that we had received that we didn't realize or we didn't expend the funds?
Correct. There were some old grants that we had that we didn't, we appropriated, last, I think the last meeting, we appropriated a lot of to what we're introducing tonight to try and utilize those funds on other items in town.
But it's not, it's money left over.
Money left over.
Left over, yeah, that we did not use. It's not new money that we're working on tonight. So we went and looked at what was not used and we're re-appropriating some of that money, some of, or introduced.
Excuse me, and there were also some capital ordnance that were over five years old?
That's what we're re-appropriating.
Oh, so that's different things?
Yeah, that's what we're being re-appropriated, the capital ordnances. The grants were just grants that we never funded, so they either use the money or close them out, either, or somebody else.
So why didn't we use the money?
We used what we could use. There's some things like clean communities, you know, you can use certain things, so you're limited on what you can use anymore. Juggaline, same thing, don't use it for certain things, and if you don't have programs, it's not, we only run one program, Juggaline, the funds sit there, but we can use them.
Okay, so then the introduction of the bond ordnance, various capital improvements?
Correct.
What, that is for this money that we didn't use?
Not the grant money, that's what the capital ordnances that are being re-appropriated. Capital ordnances in the past, that we have money left over, like Orchard Street, Hamilton Street. So instead of lapsing into capital reserve, which you can use, we're going to take it, re-appropriate those funds, it's not new debt, it's already debt we're paying on, and reutilize it for the stormwater prizes we have on up, instead of redoing bond and taking money out.
So this capital, this various capital improvements is going to only be for 67 for 23, 47?
67. I don't have it in front of me, it's just an introduction, I don't have it, it's more than 67,000, obviously.
Then what else are we getting, because I recall being said at all of this meeting, there will be no more bonding unless it's absolutely necessary.
Right, we're not doing, we're not opening, we're not going for new bonds, we're taking the old bonds and re-appropriating the money that we already bonded.
That's only 67?
And we have to, we have to do visas for the repairs on Star Lake, am I correct?
It's a hundred thousand dollars, the coal burn on Star Lake is thirty thousand dollars for an HVAC unit in the police department right now, it has no HVAC, it is down, it broke three weeks ago, we have no money to fix it, so we have to take money out here.
And we have to finish Chestnut Street.
Chestnut Street's on there. Yes, we have a police shed that we took down, we got the trailer that has to go back in for accreditation, where they store their evidence and stuff like that, so we need to put that shed back in.
And that also has to have outside fencing around the back?
Correct, for in-house, in-house stuff.
But it's not new money. No, it's not.
The only map that's in here is 67 for 23, 47?
That also includes three hundred something thousand dollars for the leisure playground, so it's like, I'm going to say it's nine hundred thousand dollars, but we're getting five hundred thousand back in grants. So it's really only four thousand, or four hundred thousand, let's call it, ballpark figures, I'll hold it to that, of re-appropriated funds from old grant, old capital ordnances. It's not new money.
Well, the only, now that's in here, the capital ordnance is sixty seven thousand.
I don't know where you're looking, I had to pull up.
The corrective action from the orders.
There's above, this is up and above that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This is up and above that. This is money that we have in old grants, old capital ordnances that we located and we're re-appropriating for those items.
Besides the ones that they have.
Exactly right. Okay, yes, thank you.
Anybody else wish to come up? See you in a moment, a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reported committees?
Good evening, Mayor. I have the numbers for the Tri-Borough First Aid Squad. The totals for August were one hundred and seventy calls. Year-to-date, they've gotten one thousand three hundred and twenty-one calls. Tri-Borough had one hundred and thirty-six calls covered, county and mutual aid coverage calls were thirty-four, the calls to Butler were sixty-nine, Bloomingdale was forty-three, Kenelon was fifty-four, and mutual aid calls were four. They had a, they were tagging this weekend, where they're collecting money to, and they were also in attendance at the nine eleven memorial, and they have a big state coming up for next year, and the band that's going to be playing is High Strung Band, and they have, so far, thirty-seven active adult members, nine team squad members, and they hired, they have four drivers, and they're getting another four new drivers, so they'll have eight drivers in total. And just to, just to let people know that the Tri-Borough First Aid Squad, if you go on their website, they are accepting applications if you are a retired person that knows first aid and want to volunteer somehow, they will accept your, and if you have the time, they will definitely accept you, and they, if you needed any kind of medical equipment on loan, they, they have it. They are very lucky to have such a united front with them. The Bloomingdale Library, they're going to be this Saturday at the Celebration Day, and Ellie says she's going to have a lot of crafts for everyone, and they, and they'll have sign-ups for, if you haven't registered online. Of course, on their website, they have their, they have a great newsletter there, where they have certain dates for book clubs and baby reading Mondays, ten thirty, they have open reading days, ten thirty on Tuesday, and while crafts on October 2nd. On September 30th, there's going to be a Rosemarie Rubinetti, this is her second time here, on Tuesday, September 30th, 7:00 PM, it's free because their board of trustees pays for this, and she'll, it's regarding Understanding Your Dreams. Last time I attended one, it was supposed to be here at Council Chambers, but there were so many people that they moved it to the Fireman's Hall, which it might happen again this time. And then October 2nd, they have Weird New Jersey doing a mystery, The Mysteries of New Jersey, which is a very, you know, popular magazine, that's going to be also 7:00 PM, October 2nd, in Council Chambers, but they do want you to register, so they could get some kind of a head count. And Dueling Pianos is their big fundraiser, they had, the trustees had to cancel their pack of Bingo, so if you haven't attended one of these Dueling Pianos, it's on October 17th, it's a Friday night, 7:00 PM, it's a sixty-dollar per person ticket, you can bring your own snacks for the table, and whatever you want to drink, and it's a really fun night, and it's at Glenwild Lake Clubhouse, Seven Club Astro, but all this stuff is, is on the website. And then for the seniors, again, they also have a new website, Facebook page, and they're located right behind Borough Hall, they have lots of things on the bulletin board available for you to check out, and they have lots of classes for their, sorry, they have lots of classes and, you know, and Bingo, and every day, they also have their September calendar, every Wednesday, they go, the Golden Age Club meets and does walking, they do walking club, there's Bingo and lunch, aerobic classes, chair aerobics, definitely, if you are a senior in town and are bored, you shouldn't be bored because there's lots of things to do there. September, they just went to, their, September 15th to 16th, they went to Mystic, Connecticut. On September 21st, the Senior Center presents the Bloomingdale Coronet Band, which they provide for refreshments, it's right, it's going to be at the Senior Center parking lot at the beautiful new gazebo that, that we built for them. And on October 26th, they are offering a trip to dinner and music, it's like an Oktoberfest at the Black Forest Inn, but all this stuff is located on the Bloomingdale, our town website, under the Senior Center, and also at, if you want to go on Facebook, or go into the Senior Center, look at the calendars there. That's all.
That's it? Nice.
I could say more, there's a lot more.
More?
Excuse me, Passaic County Scrap Metal Tanks and Cylinders Recycling Collection is meeting this Sunday, September 21st, at Passaic County Public Works Facility, 1310 Route 23 North in Wayne, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. is for Passaic County residents only. Right now, according to the New Jersey Forest Fire Service, we are under a Stage Two restriction, which means all fires in wooded areas will be prohibited unless an elevated prepared fireplace, elevated charcoal grill, or stove using electricity or liquid or gas fuel. And if you need any information on that, you can go to the New Jersey site, the forest fire site. We did start hydrant flushing from September 15th to October 17th, from 8 a.m. to 2:00 PM. If you have questions to when your street will be on, you can see, go onto the borough website and go to the DBW page. On September 18th, the Clerk's Office for Passaic County will be doing an outreach, that's full passport notary oath and renewal and free veterans ID cards, that is from sev, I'm sorry, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The November date is now canceled, so if you see that on their site, you're now canceled for the November date. September 20th, Bob K., Bob Cochran 5K, and Celebration Day is Celebration Day, John is leisure from 11:00 to 4:00. Saturday, October 18th, Expedition with Bloomingdale Town Scavenger Hunt, 9:30 a.m. at Sloan Park. Tuesday, November 11th, Veterans Day, 11:00 a.m. at Sloan Park. On October 1st, the, our Bloomingdale Search and Rescue will be doing a presentation to local police departments, fire departments, Office of Emergency Management, that's going to be 5:30 p.m. at the Fireman's Hall next door. The, the presentation really is fantastic, and I really want to thank our search and rescue for all the time and effort that they put into that. The Board of Health, there was no reports. If anyone wants to sign up for RAVE, which is our emergency notification system, please go to the borough website, it's on the homepage, bottom, right-hand side, and Recycle Coach is on there as well, right next to RAVE, so if you want notifications right on your phone as to what garbage day it is, what recycling day it is, the app is really fantastic, I would suggest to sign up for that as well. That's it.
Great. Dave?
The Board of Ed is continuing their search for a new superintendent, I hope to have more information after tomorrow's Board of Ed meeting.
Right, two items, I'll go with an easy one first. Item B on our agenda tonight will be a conditional approval for the major soil permit. This was reviewed by our planning board, and I just would encourage all of you guys to support it, with the condition set for it, including bonding, to ensure that any damage that occurs from the trucks moving the soil could be addressed afterwards for 68 on top. Second is for our BEC, they are now at a point where we have the first formal meeting minutes getting delivered and prepared in a way that I think is very, very efficient, and they have some concerns about the deer, because we discussed the last meeting, we're aware of, I know continued information is going to come from that, from the Raritan Valley Community College, and from Upper Saddle River, that Mike is going to reach you have to. I don't see Patrick today, but he'll have some more information for us as well at some point in time. A concern that the BEC has is the encouragement and the hands-off approach of my role, to try and get them to operate more independently. So if there is another council member willing and able, I'd be happy to discuss with you guys having a different liaison role, now that they're at this position and preparing minutes and operating more efficiently, that someone else can take over more handily, and they would be better suited and are ready for it, as am I.
I am going to be taking that role.
Thank you, John.
Any else? Mike?
Just a couple things, both ponds, we did all the extras that we, thanks to council for re-appropriating the funds from the open space from the county, the fountain is done, the sidewalk finished up today, looks fantastic, we have the cameras installed as well, we're waiting on the sign, the Oak Park Playground sign to come in, probably in a couple weeks or so, should be there, and that should be the last step for that project. And we have Anamel is going out to bid, that is, infrastructure water, as well as road paving curves, and 10-16, October 16th would be the bid open for that project here, in the council chambers, 10-18. I have some stuff on the deer, but I'm assuming they may come up during the second public comment, can we call that?
Yeah, we'll talk about it in the beginning. Okay. Amy, you?
Nothing received.
Okay, just a couple things from me, Dawn touched on the list, the 5K this week and celebration, John's not here, Celebration Day should be fun, they have a very good band, Cooks Band playing down there, so we hope our residents come down and enjoy all that, there's a lot of activities going on that day there. Roads will be closed, the same roads that we close all the time, coming, starting at the cul-de-sac behind the Verden School, and work its way all the way across Glenwild, Oprah Hillside, down Reeves, cross Oak, cross Union to Chestnut, and then they, Wiggles Way back to Paulson Street to the back end. They should be closed approximately about an hour, but as the race goes, every time the last person gets past the street, we open it up, so we open it as we go, so we don't keep it closed for the whole thing. So that should be a fun day for our residents, with Celebration Day going on. The other thing I wanted to touch on, because it was asked at our last meeting, I called the mayor of Kenelon, Kenelon went live in their, I believe it was their August meeting for their council meetings. It is YouTube Live, but that, there's no interaction from the public that's home, they can view what's going on at council chambers, they can email the mayor the next day or whenever, and then make the council respond if they have any questions, but it's not, it's not interactive over the internet, it's just you can see and hear everything that's going on. So I've had a conversation with Mike regarding that, and who else did we talk to? I should, yeah, I think Dave.
Yeah.
Dave, yeah. And actually Oakland does it, so I went and watched their council meeting, and I watched Kenelon, you can go on YouTube, general, find Kenelon, and see how it, it's just one camera on the dais, and then you can see where a person comes up and asks questions, and you can hear the dialogue back and forth, which is pretty interesting. So we're going to look into that when the, the council will make that ultimate decision if we want to do that. By me seeing in other towns, it looked pretty interesting, and I'm in favor of it, the more the public can see, the better off, and the more transparent we are, see what's going on in our town. So more to come on that, and I'll probably will sit with Rich and figure that out on that end of it. But our stuff is usually up next day, Rich, about?
Depends on my schedule.
Yeah, so if Rich is volunteering his time to do all this, we'll be thanking him for doing that, so that people can actually still see what's going on, it just isn't same day right then. The other thing, just so everybody knows, for the consent agenda, item F is being removed, okay? You all should have got an email from Bree today that that was being removed from the agenda today, it's no longer needed. Okay, so it won't, that'll be pulled off there. The main street work that's going on down there, they are working up all the crosswalks now, putting all the ADA ramps in down there, so hopefully that project will pick up speed and be completed all the way through. I think, like you told me, they're going to mill and pave, probably.
Should be done by November 1st.
But they want to be done at night, right?
Well, they'll pay it at night.
They want to mill and pave at night, so it doesn't interfere with, with local traffic in the morning and afternoons. So once it's paved, it'll rewind and all that's done, and all the turn signals are in there, it'll, it'll look really nice, it'll look, it'll look new, so that project is almost, almost complete with that. Okay, that's pretty much all I have, so we'll go to Resolution Number 2025 9.9, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Yes.
Second, any questions? Roll call please. Remember, item F is no longer in there.
Brockhurst?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Brockhurst?
Yes.
Okay, adopts our resolution number 2025 9.16, a payment of the bills, do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that still 9.16 with the removal of that?
Yes, we'll leave it, yes, it'll stay right where it, everything is, we'll just take, 13 will no longer exist. Okay. So, second, any questions? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Brockhurst?
Yes.
Okay, adopts our resolution number 2025 9.17, purchase of two vehicle for the police department, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Any questions? Just so people know, the one vehicle I believe has a hundred and forty-nine thousand miles on it, right, and the other one's a hundred and eight, and the one vehicle, both motor mounts broke, so to repair that, the engines will have to be pulled, and they have a lot of miles on it, so it's, it just makes more sense to replace those vehicles, we haven't bought a police vehicle in three years.
Yep.
Three years.
Keep mine at that mileage?
That's miles, not, and plus hours, so it's more, it's more.
I want it to be around twenty, yeah, because they're costly, huh?
Okay, alright, roll call please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Brockhurst?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Item C, adopts our resolution number 2025 9.18, New Jersey State Contract Labor and
Materials for PD Vehicles, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Any questions on this? I'm sure we'll just stay out with the other ones.
It's the outfit of the two of the vehicles, the phone included, and the price that we share with you.
Okay. Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Brockhurst?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item D, adopts our resolution number 2025 9.19, conditional approval for major soil permit at 68 Hilltop Terrace. This is simply a resident that wants to make improvements to their property in the back, if anybody's familiar with Hilltop Terrace, the back end that borders Knolls Road, it's quite a clip between where the homes are and where the lower homes are, and there's very little backyard up there, so the resident wants to make it, expand his backyard and have a better playing area for his children. So do I have a motion? So move, second.
May I, can I?
Yes.
The, I know that the, the resolution states as per, the resolution is to come from the planning board, and the planning board, I know Councilman Catalano, you mentioned a bond.
Correct.
This doesn't mention a bond in it, what came from, though, truly up to the government body. It does mention that the planning board recommends that the mayor and council issue a major soil movement permit to permit the importation of approximately 656 cubic yards of soil onto the property. The planning board further recommends that the mayor and council require the applicant to comply with Chapter 32 Soil and Soil Removal Sections of the Borough Code. Board also recommends that the mayor and council require that the applicant participate in a pre-construction meeting with the borough, the board engineer, construction official, and police department prior to the soil movement. The board further recommends that the granting of a major soil permit by the government body be subject to the Hudson Essex Soil Conservation District, which I believe the applicant already had done that. Finally, the planning board recommends that the mayor and council issue a major soil movement permit based upon the representations of the applicant that it will comply with the August 27th, 2025 report, the board engineer prepared by Tom Barati, I have that report, and he didn't mention that in there.
So I believe we should confirm, but in Tom Barati's report, we discussed the bond limits, and I should say, right, well.
The, the, this is the other one.
You can see one, so. Well, let me. You have it correct, this is the, this looks like the July dated letter, not the August dated letter, can you find the August dated letter?
While you're doing that, just state your name and address, yeah, and I'll just go there.
Nicholas Chingrandi, 68 Hilltop Terrace.
Okay, just, this is obviously the property owner, you complied, I was at that meeting, and we talked about getting a bond for that, you agreed to that, if that's what it took, yes, but at the meeting, it was like up in the air still.
So I think what we, yeah, the discussion was kind of like what that bond figure would be, because your recommendation, I spoke to Tom Barati, and basically we were just going to follow based upon the application cost, what that would be, and I think it was a five thousand dollar bond, that's not what the bond costs, but.
It's, it's a five thousand dollar bond, but that, within that bond, if there's any damage done due to this project?
Yes.
It covers a lot more than five thousand.
It covers a lot more than five thousand.
This is just to hold.
It's kind of like an security, like a little bit of chocolate company, I'm sure, so I think that.
Yeah, but he's, he's taken out the permits.
Yeah, and, and Barati said that traditionally, that's held by the person that holds the permits. So I think that it's the August letter, not the July letter, but it is, it's in the August letter.
But I think, I think that needs to be done for this to be. That's what needs to be done for it to be approved, so can we amend that?
Yeah, you can amend the resolution that you're going to adopt today to include the condition that a bond is provided by the applicant in accordance with the engineers' review letters and reports.
Yes.
If that's, if that's where it came from.
One second, see if I have the August letter in the emails, to make sure that you can correct, one has it there.
Okay, thank you.
Because there were two letters, they gave us only.
I did, the one, this is the planning board secretary, I asked for it, she didn't administer.
Yeah. But I just think that, that should be definitely in there, since it's a brand-new protocol and work that we have there.
It's also required under the code, it's Section 32, there's two point seventeen of performance.
Well, that's what they mentioned, 32, maybe that's where it, that was.
Yeah, performance guarantee is required.
Okay, so what are you going to say?
It is, it says as per Chapter 32, there's no amendment, but it mentions in there as per Chapter 32.
It's just a technical, she printed it right.
To comply with Chapter 32 Soil and Soil Removal Sections of our code, so you're saying it's in Chapter 32.
It, it is, I mean, I would feel more comfortable if that section specifically and or the engineer's letters were referenced.
Do you agree, George, we're going to have it in there. Do you have this August 25th letter by chance on you?
I have the 32, there's two point seven.
No, the one that Tom sent you to have a. No, but the one that Tom sent you, they have a list of review items.
I could probably find it in my emails.
Yeah, we understand what that is.
We're going to amend this to state that, and you're agreeing to it. We have on record that you agree to it, so we were going to, we're just going to add it in there as it's been, just to cover and catch, in case that is happened. Okay? Any other questions regarding this?
No, give them the discussion. A motion for our discussion.
Yeah, you would, you would need to make a motion to adopt as amended.
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt item D, the conditional soil movement permit to 68 Hilltop, based upon the discussion amended.
Okay. So we have, I need a second on that.
Second.
Any other questions about this? Roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Bronkers?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Item E, adopts a resolution number 2025-9 dot 20, appointment of tax assessor Aaron Alvarez. As you all know, our current tax assessor is retiring, and Aaron has called the certificates to become a tax assessor. Mike has, has did all his research on this, and this is his recommendation. Do I have a motion? Any questions? Roll call.
Bronkers?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Item F, introduction of bond ordinance number 25, 2025 various capital proofs. Do I have a motion to read by title? Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements by in the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of the state of New Jersey, requiring $960,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $912,000 bonds or notes of the borough financed part of the cost thereof.
Okay, so that will be October 7th. October 7th. Okay, do you have a motion of late public comment?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's, anyone wish to come up? You guys want to talk about the deer?
Yeah, that's, that's why we're all here. They, we had.
Come on, come on.
Karen Schmidt, five hundred and five, representing BEC, with our administration. By the way, notes will be sent out for our meeting on a regular basis if we have the appropriate members, as we've been asking Dominic for some time. We need digital members, and because of conflicts, we haven't been able to hold full meetings for some time.
Please send me your schedule, and I will make as many meetings as I can.
The first Wednesday of every month.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday of who we senior center for. So at our last BEC meeting, we had the residents from Brelandale come about concerns regarding the overpopulation of deer within Bloomingdale. Patrick thought he was going to be able to be here tonight, but he had a conflict, but Patrick was going to be reaching out to Raritan Valley Community College because he believes that they have a program that supports, just, they would assess communities with the deer population and make possible suggestions. It also came up about Saddle River having a deer hunt, which, Mike, we shared notes with you yesterday, we found there were notes about issues that they've had in Saddle River. We know the town is, there's a lot of deer. I get them every night. They're freeloaders is basically what it is. But there's limited things that we can do as a community to, because of our houses being so close together, and deer are just, they're deer. They spook easily, our streets are together, are very close together, there's a lot of cars that come through, so if you spook them, they're going to run out. So, but the residents came to our meeting and asked us for assistance in seeing what the town can do, whatever action the town does decide to do. We know that there's really no cost the town will put into it, because our budgets are very tight, but also, it's just the way the community is, that it doesn't really allow for a hunt is really what people are thinking about. But yeah, that's why they came and why we were here. We thought, like I said, Patrick, we thought he was going to be here, but he, at the last minute, he had a conflict, which he couldn't do, so we're still waiting to hear if he heard anything back here about the community college.
The thing that I've been thinking about since they came here for the first time is the problem that we have. First of all, I understand the deer problem, all right? I have it in my house, all my bushes in the front are, all right, they're eating, they got rabbits and everything too.
It was one of the parking lots, and I.
Well, they go come here, they go in and get watered, and then they go back and go wherever they go.
We were a few minutes late because I had to chase the flock off them off on my name as well.
The problem that you're going to have is private properties all around you.
Yeah.
Up in any area, I mean, especially up in that area, I could, I would really be shocked if Star Lake Camp let you go in there and do one.
Well, I'm, I'm across the street from Friendship Park, and as I left, there were four in Friendship Park waiting to cross the street to come into my yard.
And now, this time of year is when they start really moving, just like the rest season. I mean, you would know better than me, right? Is that time?
Well, if you can, if you can get permission from everybody, you only, like postseason, you only have to be 150 feet from an occupied club. So if you have enough room, I mean, I know guys in town that hunt, I mean, if you can get everybody on that street to say, okay, go ahead, then you don't have a problem. I mean, that's.
But most residents, their yard is only 150 foot, and their house is right in the middle of that, so.
The biggest issue you're going to have is your property is all board of camp. Now, years ago, I can just go back, we were allowed to go in there.
Yeah.
But it's a different time and time.
Different leadership over.
Right, and, and just my opinion, you know, is I don't think there's that many hunters anymore compared to the way it used to be. And, you know, so it's, it's a really, I, I feel for you and all that stuff, because I, you know, I have every means in front of my house, and they eat it, and some of the bushes, my wife is glad to eat because she don't like them. Hold on, hold on, you got to come up, if you're going to talk, you got to come up.
So, you know, I.
Just naming habits.
So, you know, I know we're doing about small property, but the lot directly across the street from us is over an acre, so it seems like there are, there are opportunities, there are potential solutions. I understand there's a lot of resistance to hunting, but there's also, you know, people who would agree with that. So, you know, I, I think that there are, you know, and I know even if there's nothing in the budget, but, you know, we're, we're taxpayers, and there's a lot of municipal services that we don't use. We don't have children, we don't have, you know, children in the public school, so we're paying for taxes for a lot of things that we don't use, so it would also be nice to see the tax rate that is something that is a concern.
I called the BA of the Saddle River and talked to Mr. Molinari. The town is not, is not involved, the only thing they got involved, but they, they allowed the United Boat Hunters to come in and set individual agreements with each town resident if they wanted to hunt. He also said that over 90% of their properties are two acres or larger, so it worked for them a little easier. He does have a lot of issues, he hears complaints about is when a deer gets shot and it doesn't die in that person's property, and it jumps a wall, it jumps on somebody else's property, and they're not for the hunt, it turns into a nightmare for, for him.
I can understand that, I can.
The properties aren't delineated, you don't know who's hunting, if he's on a property hunting or not on a property hunting, so he's, he's, they're looking, they're hoping another Bergen County town jumps on board with them, because they're sole right now, they're the only ones doing it. I also have an article I just, I received from the BEC today about controversy with this hunt, that I can hand to them as well, you can take a look at it, go online and look at it as well. But he also, again, the town was not involved, it didn't cost the town any money, all they did was set them up with the United Boat Hunters, and they came in and told them how they were going to do it, and they just agreed to, like Harvey said, there's a certain amount of distance from a house, they need to stay, but when you have quarter acre lot or less than eight acre lots, it's rough out there.
And I don't know how much liability if we, you know what I mean? How much liability would fall on the borough, contrabid something with somebody was to get hurt or hit.
And they also don't allow hunting on borough property.
They don't?
No, Saddle River is not involved, but it was other than, they set them up with the Boat Hunters Club, and the residents deal with them, sign their own contracts and living up to.
So let's give you this article. Can you take that?
Thanks, Cam.
I guess there'll be more to come, but I, I, in my head, if you guys correct me if I'm wrong, or you have different ideas, I don't know exactly what we, we can do. I understand the taxpayers and all, come on up, it's okay, taxpayers and all that stuff, but this is a, I think on both sides of the fence, you'll have, some neighbors will be for it, some will be against it, you might want to have problems, I, I, I just, and I know the street, I know the street really well, houses aren't fairly close compared to up in Saddle River. I, I just don't know where we could go with that, I just.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My husband is a hunter, and when I told him, the first time you guys came, I mentioned it to him, and immediately he, he told me about Princeton. So in Princeton, and then I looked up, you know, the internet, and Princeton has a longstanding professional deer culling program to control its over, abundant deer population, which causes ecological damage, vision, vehicle collisions, and Lyme disease. So the, the, you know, ecological impact alone, I know my hostas are like a salmar, they're nubs. I have my neighbor, I mean, I only have a quarter property, and my backyard is Glenwild, the tennis court. I don't know, if you could talk to whatever hunters, like if it doesn't cost us anything, and if, I mean, of course, I'd probably get permission, you'd have that, get permission for everybody, but, you know, I, I ran more cycle, my husband runs more cycle, he hit a deer, I've been, all the way up in Sparta, and not, not here, but it's scary coming up my hillside drive, and they, they don't care. So, I mean, if, if, if it doesn't, if you could figure out, I mean, and I know a lot of hunters that can do it, I wonder, do we charge them to hunt here, like, like as far as.
State licensing.
Yeah, state licensing. We have, we have nothing to do with licensing, we have nothing to do with any of that.
We, there's, you can't hunt on borough property. The actions that we would take would simply be what Mike stated, which is to support the United Boat Hunters approaching homes in the borough to hunt on private property.
And buy by our codes.
And, and buy by our codes, and I, I would be in support of that, I think it would re-encourage hunting, which is an American pastime, and I grew up in Pennsylvania all the time, we got off the first day of deer season in high school. So that being said, it is more pragmatic because of the ecological damage that you're bringing up. So if, if that's an option, and if the council feels as such, I would support doing so.
And as another, and as far as revenue for the town, how the program works, it's a professional culling, the township of Princeton contracts with professional wildlife management, such as Buffalo Inc., and they gave them community-based permits, the municipality obtains permits from the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife to implement community-based deer management. So I mean, this may bring some kind of, because I'm sure plenty of hunters would want.
I'm very familiar with Princeton because I grew up in that area. Princeton is a lot like Saddle River with two-plus acres of property, houses spread apart, it's not conducive, their, their plan would not work well in Bloomingdale. I grew up in a rural area, next door was a 100-plus acre farm, my, my parents had four and a half acres, next door was 10 acres, they always gave permission for hunting. We had a horse, my sister walked out as a hunter standing on one side of our fenced-in area, and the horse is by the barn, and the barn's within 25 feet of a great big white house, and my sister caught the hunter taking him at the horse, and he said, oh, I thought it was a deer. Deer don't neigh or whiff. So some of these hunters, if we're going to invite them in, they have to be extra careful because people have pets, and they're over, some of them are over aggressive.
Something that he mentioned, like when you guys mentioned that, that college that would come.
Raritan Valley.
Like, they, you said that they would do like this drones, I mean, I've seen a lot of dead deer, and I don't even know how many, how many more we have, I think they're dwindling just by the car, you know, like how many do we have?
I don't want to get off track, but the cars hitting deer, we're, we're here, we're a complaint from a resident that's having problems with deer, and they're not the only ones in that area that are having problems. We gave you some literature, and I think we need to do more research on what we're allowed and not allowed to do, and whoever you speak to, I think they need to come and go visit and see what their recommendation is, if anything, will they even propose going to do that?
And I know we've been focusing on hunting specifically, but there are other options. So if hunting is too controversial, there are other possibilities that could be explored.
Well, I, I'd have to know what those, those are, but I mean, there are, there are poisons and feed that they've taken in other towns and municipalities, not in Jersey that I'm aware of, but there are culling options that have been used in a lot of other states. I mean, the complexity there is beyond my knowledge.
Yeah, there's deer contraceptives. Possibility, I don't know. Well, I grew up, they were talking about that in the 90s, so, you know, it's not a new thing, it's something that other municipalities.
I don't doubt you, I guess, interesting, but I guess there's more to come, I don't know really, I think we're all stuck on what we can and cannot do. So I think your first step is look at the literature that Mike gave you. And then if those, you contact them, and they want to come out, I'll come to your house with them, and meet with them, also hear what they have to say, and then we'll bring it back, but it's, it's a really touchy, you know, and then there's the people that are lovers, you're going to have, you know, that side of it, no matter whether it's just all your neighbors say yes, but the people on a different street might say, what are you crazy, you know? So I don't know, I just, more to come, I guess, appreciate it. Anyone else will check them up? No. That's it? Okay. Motion closely public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our motion going to executive?
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, like I said, this is a matter of negotiations, and there'll be no action taken after. Our next meeting is on October 7th, 2025. Thank you all for coming up.